All right, we're going to move on to Committee of the Whole. We have five items before us today. We're going to start with a discussion of jail options. And just wanted to note that there was an amendment to the packet last week. All public was notified, but if you have the original packet memo, that there, the additions are all online now for you. So at the April 18th, 2016 City Council meeting, our council asked the administration to present on jail options to date. And staff will present information on available options and also discuss previous proposals related to an agreement with Waukam County on the jail facility. And it says Peter and Brian Heinrich, so I don't know who's starting. Gentlemen, I'll turn that over to you.
Well, I just wanted to put this in context. This is a compilation of what we talked about with the county, a copy, obviously, of the Red Line document that we presented to them, and a copy of what we got back from the county, and then some other items that we had brought forward. Next, or I don't know when the meeting got rescheduled. In June, we're going to go to the small cities group, and they are, they asked, I said we would present the same thing to them, to show them where we've been and where we're going. But we can't say where, what our proposal is, because I don't think that we've gotten the direction from you about exactly what it is that we would be supporting. We were waiting for the planning and the discussion to go forward. There has been, I don't know if it was a miscommunication between the county and the city about the purpose of the small cities presentation. It says COB presentation on the jail, you can read what, new proposal on the jail. And I, just so you know, we are not making a new, any new proposal to the small cities. And we just wanted to have a discussion with them about the fact that we actually had demonstrated to the county executive that we had a proposal that he could look at. So I don't know how that is going to be resolved, because Brian has asked a couple of times to have that changed, and it comes back the same way. So I just wanted to clarify that, in case you read that in, in any of the materials from the county, that that's not what we're doing.
So, good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. Just picking up where the mayor left off there, the, the information on this item, there's a lot, a lot of Red Line, a lot of different concepts were discussed. And so what we tried to do is, it's actually on page 63, the jail options. And so that matrix is intended to be a very high-level look at the half a dozen or so different proposals that have been discussed at some point, going back to, oh, probably summer of 2014. And the shaded part, so the bottom three, those are, those were concepts that we discussed. We did not move to any sort of a proposal forum. So those were ideas, again, that we just, we kicked around and thought, is there a possibility that one of these has legs, so to speak? Could we, could we further move this idea? Those were the three that, that did not get really beyond that part, or that discussion. And so, just quickly, status quo, that's what we're doing today. We still utilize the Waukam County Jail, primarily booking and pre-trial. We have very few people in there today, and I don't know if Peter wants to add anything to that, certainly can.
I mean, I could just say that, in terms of Bellingham-only misdemeanants in the Waukam County Jail since January, we have hovered right around between five and eight Bellingham-only inmates in the main jail.
And so, I think the reason, one of the reasons why that's important is when we last discussed the jail, sort of in earnest with the county, the last proposal, and it's in the, the packet, we articulated a 15% capital payment based on our historic use. The response back from the county executive was that it needed to be at 21%. And so that, that is a bit higher. I think it's worth mentioning that Waukam County is by far the largest user of that facility. And so if you go back to the memo, the very first bullet that we identified, and this is, I think, Council, you've affirmed this, that the equitable contribution to the capital, what we're getting at is not that every user should pay the same share, but that the users should pay based on their use. That's the equity, and that's the principle that we're trying to achieve. There's a handful more bullets there that, again, I think, Council, you've affirmed those. This is, in many ways, this is exactly where we left off, was, was being unable to sort of overcome the difference in that capital provision. There was some discussion, you'll see in the, the city's proposal from 2015, on the operating side, we proposed a formula to determine what the day bed rate would be. I don't know, Peter, I don't know that we, we ever really discussed that in earnest, if that was a formula that, that would work for, for others, but that was certainly our direction that, that, that we were headed, is, is a different model in terms of affirming that operating cost. So, again, there's a lot of information in the packet, we included that, much of that is by reference. The real, I think the thing that you asked for is that matrix. And so I guess I would ask, if you have any questions or comments, we'd, we're certainly available to answer those.
Councilmember Lillikwist.
I appreciate this coming forward, and this information also be more available to the public. I had a surprising conversation after the Waukam Transportation Authority meeting with a county council member, and the county council member said, well, you know, you need to be specific. Have you, you know, yet to show some, any particular numbers that you're talking about? And I said, what do you mean? We did that last year. So I still think there's a need to convey how specific we have been, not just the range of things we've talked about, but sometimes the specifics we've gotten into. I also want to kind of ask, kind of almost rhetorically, we recently adopted a modified version of a statement of kind of principles that the county council adopted. And one of those principles had to do with financial contribution would be based on actual use or best estimates of actual use. That appears to be just a rewording of the equitable contribution principle. So it seems like this county council has already sort of agreed on that bullet point. Is it a sense that the administration at the county is kind of understanding that?
Well, I, I guess what I would tell you is, I was certainly pleased to see that in the county adopted resolution, that certainly appears that they understand that equity, equity concept. And I guess, I would go back, you know, your, your first comment about the lack of specificity from the city, it's hard for me to imagine that that's the case. That proposal was in a council, city council packet, it was included in a county council packet, and there's a two-page letter from the county executive addressing the points that we raised, and that's, that's in this packet. So it's hard for me to maybe agree or understand that we weren't specific in what we proposed, that, that we got a response back that didn't work for the county.
Councilmember Henle.
Thanks for putting this together, that's very helpful to have it all in one document. While this may be where we left off, Bellingham has moved on to some degree in how it's addressed the issue of incarceration prevention and reduction with two programs. One is the electronic home monitoring program, and then the other is the agreement with Yakima. And between the two, we've reduced the bed days by 2,500 as of the end of April. So Bellingham has made significant efforts in, in, I think, what I would regard as showing leadership in reducing the amount of inmates, our inmates in the facility. So my question is, though, my understanding is that the small cities have contracts in place with Yakima to house inmates. And is, is the county asking or requiring the small cities to take action on those contracts?
You know, I can't really speak to that. I know, I know, I think it's Linden for sure has a contract with Yakima. I don't know that, I don't know that they've been asked to move people, I don't know that they have. As far as I'm aware, maybe Peter can help me out, that City of Bellingham and, I believe, Lumine Nation are the only two users of the, of the facility that have endeavored to transfer inmates out.
Peter Rafado, Legal Department, I guess, add on to that, I don't know much more, other than, I know Sumas, I believe Sumas has sent one inmate to Yakima at some point. I don't know specifically about any of the other municipalities. I believe all of the other municipalities have contracts with both Yakima County and SCORE. And the agreement that we've been trying to negotiate with the county on kind of the shorter-term jail use extension calls for all the jurisdictions other than the county using the jail to have a really, the ability to have a quick return of an inmate or a transfer of an inmate. I don't know the specifics on, to date, how much that has happened, other than with Bellingham, and I know that Lumine Nation has done quite a bit in that regard, too.
Councilmembers, any other questions, thoughts?
I just wanted to add that I, I really appreciate the way that this is laid out and this information, the way it's presented. I, I think it's really easy for people to understand, and to allude to what Councilmember Lillikwist was saying, is that it seems to be a certain perception that we haven't been communicating, but I think we have. So have this all outlined and laid out this way, very clearly, about what we're looking at in regards to percentages, et cetera, what we're hoping to achieve out of this, is, is very well laid out. So thank you for supplying this information in this way. Anyone else? No? Okay, so that was for information only?
I think I would just add, I'm certain we'll be back to talk about this at some point. And so we'll be sure and keep you updated.
I'm certain, too. The second item for us today is a discussion on our low-barrier shelter update. This is for information only. The Planning and Community Development Department has been leading a coordinated effort to facilitate the creation of a low-barrier shelter for the city's hard-to-house homeless population. Four tactics have been employed, with some level of progress made in each approach. Summary and the status of these efforts are presented as information to council, and this will, I'm going to turn it over to Rick Sipler, our Director of Planning and Community Development.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I'd like to take an opportunity today to update you on ongoing efforts city staff, in conjunction with a number of partners, have been making to address one of the more difficult populations we have in our community. Those are the hard-to-serve individuals that remain unsheltered at present. I'll start off by noting that Bellingham has a significant number of programs in place that catch a great deal of those folks. In essence, the safety net catches a lot of the folks. Our ongoing programs, as described above, and the ones in green are the ones that the city supports, provides a number of about 413 beds, plus some that have come online recently. And they do catch a lot of individuals who are unsheltered and provide a good transition. We are predicated, of course, as a community, on a housing-first model. And the clear intent is to get folks in housing. However, we do have to notice and accept, to some degree, that the change in status of many of our community members is so overwhelming for the system, that we've reached a point of crisis, and that even though we have a fairly good safety net in place, there are a significant number of community members who do not receive shelter and unsheltered at present. Based on the last point-in-time count, about 243 folks are unsheltered on a given night. That was at the point-in-time count about a year ago. And those aren't caught in the safety net, and they typically are the most difficult to serve. Those are the folks who are either single males with issues, complex individuals, seniors, people with animals, folks have their pets, and pets usually are not taken in any of the other facilities we have, couples who don't want to be separated, want to be together, and LGBTQ youth, who are a very challenged population to house because of the need to provide a separation from some other populations that may be perceived as a threat to that population. So in looking at that, we were tasked to say, how can we address that unsheltered portion of the community? And how can we learn from other models of other communities who have attacked, attempted to do this, and see what we could replicate here in Bellingham to address this population? When we look at low-barrier shelter, it's important to acknowledge that a low-barrier approach is not a no-barrier approach. In essence, there are basic rules and requirements, basic rules of being able to exist in an environment with other folks, to do it in a safe manner and not to endanger others. But moreover, any low-barrier approach, low-barrier shelter, needs to address all of the things that are listed. We need to ensure that we can get the hard-to-serve populations, that it can be self-refering, that we can accommodate those who might be excluded from other populations. When you get there, it needs to be more than warehousing people. If we're looking to break the cycle of homelessness and unsheltered population, we need to provide case management, we need to provide staff that can provide services, we need to provide access to transportation and facilities, food, all the things you would need to do, the suite of services that perhaps would lead to exiting to permanent housing, and that would be our goal. You know, as we face this issue, we look and say, what can we do in a month? What can we do in six months? What can we do in one year, or two years, or three years? Our goal in three years is we have a number of projects that are coming online right now, that would provide housing for much of this population. However, we've got three years till they come on, so how do we fill this gap? How do we provide the bridge? And in looking at that, there are three initiatives we're pursuing that might bear fruit and might provide a way cumulatively to take on a portion of this challenge. The first is, and I'll do it in order, is Lighthouse Mission Shelter. Lighthouse Mission, a longstanding organization in Bellingham, has stepped forward and say they would be interested in operating a low-barrier shelter, and they would provide the support to provide that service. At this point, we have a handshake agreement to pursue the city's end, which is, can we find a location that might work to accommodate that? As one can imagine, this is somewhat of a challenging land use, and often it's very difficult to cite. And we're currently in discussions with a number of properties, looking to see if we can find a fit where that would work. In our agreement, the city's working operation is, at this point, if we can find you a location and we can secure it, could you operate the facility? And that's kind of the handshake. They've said they would mobilize to raise the funds to continue operation, but if we need it to start sooner, they may look for some city assistance. And it's our recommendation, clearly, that when we do find that location and we do work through those kind of agreements, sooner is better because of the very emergent nature of the need that's on the streets today. The second is the Northwest Use Shelter. That's a shelter that would provide services to a specific population that's very difficult to serve. We've talked to them very preliminarily in terms of providing a program. It's sort of on hold at this point, pending to see how the first issue plays out. We have made significant strides, largely with the good work of Marine Rochant. Council's allocated a resource, we've done significant outreach to, I think, over a dozen churches, and found that virtually all of them are involved in one way or another, dealing with the homeless issue, with the unsheltered issue, but that there is some capacity, if brought together, that might provide some alternatives to address us, address some of the issues that have arisen, and provide some different means, different strategies that could be employed. We'll talk about that in a second. And finally, this is very emergent, we have a model in Spokane of a hospital that has done some outreach to provide clinic and respite beds for the unsheltered community. That's great for the community and the public interest. It also is good business, because the alternative to that is emergency room entry. And it's better to be proactive than reactive. A clinic is, is a good way of meeting those needs at a more economical price. We're working with the Opportunity Council, hopes to bring the folks who are providing that program from Spokane here, so that we might be able to meet with Peach, Peace Health and discuss it. Yes, sir?
Are these the mobile clinics I've heard about?
In, in Spokane, it's part of their unsheltered, they actually have a shelter, and it's part of that shelter, and they maintain a number of beds that are both respite beds, but they also operate a clinic. And it's been a really good model, because they have demonstrable data on the number of folks they serve, the reduction in emergency room admitances, and the ability to keep people healthy, which I think is a long-term goal. So I'm going to take the three that we have more definite information on and talk about those for just a moment. The first is working with Lighthouse Mission. This would be a low-barrier shelter, would be open 365 days a year, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. So it would replace our emergency facility and go to a permanent facility. It could be scaled up to 200 bids, beds. It would be secular. In essence, the Lighthouse Mission, very community-minded, have said that this would not be a religious requirement, there would be no component that would be required for using this facility. As noted by the graphic, it hits all of the marks in terms of who can be provided service at this facility. Right now, the city is looking to identify a potential site to address potential zoning issues that might come up in terms of establishing it, to seek the best blend for earliest operation, and will obviously be returning to this body when we have something more definite to report. The second, as mentioned, was working with the Northwest Use Services, a low-barrier shelter, this would fit a very hard-to-serve population itself, would be available 365 days a year. We might assist with the lease and some operating costs, again, that's been put on hold till the first issue sort of resolves itself, and we see what we have for the second. And finally, this is one that's shown great traction, this is the face-based outreach, might be any combination of low-barrier shelters, safe camping, safe parking, tiny homes. There's been significant traction in regards to the tiny home, folks are looking to build them, sites, potential sites have been discussed. It's, again, premature to go too far into the details, because we haven't convened all the folks together, but that is a logical next step. We would assist with permitting, and we would be the folks to facilitate that discussion. But this would be outside of the city's realm, more than just convenor and facilitator. So that sort of updates you on the process to date. I should acknowledge that both Tara Sundine and Katie Franks have been spending focused time to address various components on this. It is a very challenging issue. I should also note that, based on models in other communities, you can provide facilities of this type, it does expand the safety net, but fully, the hard-to-serve may choose not to participate. In Seattle, as they went through the ongoing work of cleaning up the camps, the folks who are living rough on the streets, they offer transportation to their programs, similar programs to the ones we're discussing. And as of today, it's about half of the folks that they contact say, yes, please, please take us to this program. The other half are leery of any municipally provided or social service provided facility, and will not be sheltered. So my colleagues and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Katie, is there anything I overlooked? Okay. Any questions on this update?
Councilmember Henle.
Can you back up a couple of slides to, there were some, one more before this, I think, one more, right there. So the, okay, so we talked about what the, what's a low-barrier shelter, you know, what would not prevent a person from getting in, and then there are some items there that are listed that would prevent someone from staying, so they've got to obey the fire and safety, not use or sell drugs. So I'm trying to get to, like, a behavior question, I guess, in terms of, like, what behaviors would be, would force a person to not be at that facility? It looks like there's no requirements on blood alcohol content or, or drug, a person being under the influence.
Within, there are some limitations they establish. They're looking, depending on the facility and the ability to separate populations, that gives greater flexibility. The challenge is, not everyone, it is not a no barrier. So, so you have to be cognizant of the safety of the other folks who are, are seeking shelter there. And I think at this point, we're, you know, as we perfect a location and we perfect a working agreement, we'll talk more specifically about it, but all of these were in an original agreement with, for example, Lighthouse, saying we need to establish levels. Currently, they don't do pets at the Lighthouse, they don't do couples, they have a limitation, I think it's .10 on alcohol, so if you're above that, you're excluded. There's some concern about folks who are off their meds, but they realize that in order to reach that hard-to-serve population, they're going to, with a better facility, they could drop their barriers a little further low, and we'll be discussing that. The safest interest is to get the most folks off, off the streets as we can, and avail them of services.
Councilmember Murphy.
One of the things that I thought about are the, as I was going through this, are the very rare instances when we, for example, red-taped derelict properties. And I'm not saying that they would go into low barrier, but I'm just optimistic and hopeful that these improvements might give people a space to go at other spaces, just for that really temporary transition when we red-tape a property and they need to find other accommodations.
Councilmember Henle.
Thank you. So how long of a leasehold would this look like for the city?
We, when we had our first very preliminary discussions, we talked about, how soon would it take for the Lighthouse to mobilize to cover both the expense of the facility as well as operational costs? They said it would be about two years, three years, depending on the site and the cost per month. At this point, it's, again, we don't have a location firm, so we really can't give you the specific breakdown, but it's looking to get them jump-started. That was their request, and seems to be a fairly good starting point for discussion.
Councilmember Lillikwist.
Thank you. So there may be some expenses involved from the city's point of view. Have we identified, is it from the Home Fund, block grant monies? Do we have any idea whether we'll be able, how, whether and how, and how much?
Well, we, we need to look at the specifics, we'd come back and discuss with the council. Home Fund has some capacity to help. Again, it's the cost, it's finding the location. We've been looking actively for about 90 days. Again, we zero in on facilities that might meet a lot of the criterions, and are respectful and mindful of their location with neighbors, and we have landlords who are, are not interested in this use being established there. We did, to be fair, look at every municipal facility, all the city's holdings, looked at the school district's holdings, the county's holdings, and looked at the port. We've had some traction on the port facilities, and some are still potential, but we're moving forward on that.
Councilmember Henle.
You had mentioned that the, the Home Fund, which you're referring to the housing levy that was passed by voters in 2012. What part of the, of the allocation, the four allocation buckets would that, is proposed for the funding this?
I think it is services, yes.
Support of services and rental assistance?
Yeah, and, and I think, again, it's a case-by-case, we have to see what that dollar amount would be, and then take a look at our best allocation of resources to meet it.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Warner.
Yeah, do I have a question, just a comment that, I'm just really supportive of this concept. It's something I think we've needed for a long time in this community, and I, I do really hope that we are able to find a place and, and work, be able to work with different partners on doing this, because I think this will help with a lot of different problems. Currently, when we're trying to move people from different tent areas and different things, it makes it a little more difficult if we don't have places, if we have this, along with all the other resources, and there's openings, we don't have to feel bad about moving people out of parks and other things, if there is a better place and a better situation for them to go, where they can get help with the situation. So I'm really hoping that we can, can find something that will work for this.
If I might just follow up on that, it did cue something, and that is, the Lighthouse Mission does not work in isolation. They currently host 13 other organizations who provide services to the folks who are using their drop-in center and facilities, and it's seen that those services, again, would be provided at any future facility. So they're, they're not unto themselves, they're fully integrated, though they're fairly modest about discussing that, and they do have connections with a lot of our existing service providers, and that, and we need that, as I could see, you need all of You need all of the services, I guess.
This one?
Nope, this one. You need all of those services to make this successful.
Councilmember Murphy.
Just another thought, based on what Terry was talking about, I also wonder if this could also hopefully become another jail alternative and diversion component as we provide more assistance to these community members that really need it.
Councilmember Hammel.
On the previous slide, you had your last bullet point for things that would be prevent, there we go, the last one must be ambulatory, not requiring hospital or nursing home care. So many of our most difficult-to-house individuals have significant health issues as well. I'm just wondering how that would be addressed through this low-barrier approach?
In very preliminary discussions with Lighthouse, they do have, I believe, four respite beds for folks who are non-ambulatory, who are ill, for those who are unsheltered. They would be looking to potentially expand that with another facility added and to relocate. They have about 40 folks right now that are unsheltered, that are sort of, would meet this low-barrier approach. That additional space could be used for other programs, too. We also think the Peace Health Initiative would really be spot-on for that one. And we do know that, that that community, those individuals are being served, but it's walking in or being transported by our EMS to the hospital to do so. So I think that might be the target there.
Anyone else? Thank you, oh, sorry, Marilyn.
And I just want to commend the staff for taking this very, very seriously, and also the advocates community for understanding that we want to work with them to make sure that we're providing shelter for the most difficult-to-house. So I want to thank everybody for what they're doing now, and I hope it'll make a big difference for our community.
Agreed. Thank you very much for all your work, and thank you, Marie, for all your outwards to the faith-based community. We really appreciate that. And this is going to, I think, make a lot of people in the community very happy because it's really hard moving camps from one place to another to another and having no place for people to go, and this will solve that, and I think it'll make a big difference for our city. So thank you very much for that. Our next item, don't go anywhere, Rick, is the overview of the draft of the 2016 Bellingham Comprehensive Plan. Staff will provide an overview briefing of the draft update to the city's comprehensive plan. Several workstations and a public hearing will be held from May to August for the council to review the draft chapters of the plan. Over the past two years, the Planning Commission has held approximately 20 meetings on the comprehensive plan. On April 21st, 2016, the commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the updated plan with the changes included in Exhibit A of the Planning Commission's findings of fact. So this is for information only, and I am going to turn it over to Rick Sepler, our Director of Planning and Community Development.
Okay. Members of the council, we come before you today to give you a overview in preparation for June 6th public hearing, where you'll hear comments from the community. And today, we present the Planning Commission recommendation. That recommendation is, one, as a result of a great deal of work from the Planning Commission in considering public comment, extensive public comment, and a evaluation of the issues we face. I'll note that Lisa will be doing the presentation, and I believe it will frame the context. This is an update and not a rewrite. We have specific mandates we need to meet, and she'll, I think at this point, take it from there.
Good afternoon. Lisa Poole, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. So as Rick stated, I'll just be providing a brief update and overview of our comprehensive plan process, and this will be the presentation. I'll go over some state requirements, the scope of the update, key changes by focus area, the Planning Commission's recommendation, and then your upcoming schedule. So GMA requires cities to fully review and update their plans at least every eight years. So this is that full update. There are several mandatory items that go with that, and that includes reviewing amendments to the Growth Management Act that have occurred since your last comprehensive plan, reviewing your urban growth area and population projections, your critical areas ordinance, you need to make sure that it's in line with best available science, and then mineral resource lands designations and development regulations, and that's not applicable to Bellingham. There's also several recommended items, and that includes reviewing the land use element, capital facilities, and transportation elements, and also updating your data. So we are in compliance with all of these state requirements. The scope of the update, this is not an overhaul of the existing plan. We really reviewed the plan and looked for outdated or redundant information, took all of that out and updated it and refreshed the format. It will look like a new plan because we use the recently adopted Economic Development Chapter as our framework for that. We also added some new graphic and photo elements to hopefully make it more readable and user-friendly. Then we worked with the public and the Planning Commission to identify five focus areas for our review and update, and these include housing choices and affordability, urban villages, health, sustainability, and innovation. And I'll talk about those in greater detail in just a moment. And that really is, those five focus areas, it's not a page-by-page, line-by-line review of the plan. We're hoping that we can really hone in on the key changes within those areas. And the red text within the chapters are those main changes that we've made, and the purple underlines and strike-throughs are the Planning Commission's recommendations. So when you look through the chapters, you'll see those different colors. We also had a lot of new public input, a lot of small group meetings, meetings with the neighborhood group, MNAC. We had two open houses, a dedicated website, it's called Engage Bellingham. We posted questions on there. We've had some good feedback on that. We also developed a comment tracker, and staff has responded to all the public comments via that comment tracker. So if you go to cob.org/compplan, you'll see all of the information listed and all the different public input that we've received. The legacies and strategic commitments, we folded that into the plan. Those were adopted in 2009, so those are new since our 2006 plan. And then, of course, the changes in state law and our new 20-year population employment forecasts. So this is just a high-level overview of some of the key changes by our five focus areas. Housing, our current plan does talk quite a bit about housing for homeless and unsheltered, but we didn't have specific goals or policies. So we did add specific policies for homeless and unsheltered. We also have specific policies related to senior housing, such as aging in place in multi-generational communities. And we also have added policies regarding student housing and working with Western and our other higher, our other institutions of higher education to address issues associated with off-campus housing. And then, we also are looking at more housing variety and housing types across our city, and this includes looking at other areas that might be appropriate for detached ADUs. Right now, they're only allowed in certain zones. And then, our infill housing toolkit was adopted in 2009, so that wasn't included in our 2006 plan. And we're talking about middle housing types, such as duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and live-work units, and also small-lot housing types. So these policies really set up our ADU ordinance update and our subdivision ordinance update, which are forthcoming. We want to make sure we have policies in place to support our work program that's coming up. Regarding urban villages, the plan is really focusing on implementing our existing urban village plans. We have six adopted urban village plans. So we're looking at prioritizing investment and incentives in these areas and also monitoring success. And then transit-oriented development on certain go-lines or high-transit, sorry, high-capacity transit lines connecting urban villages. That is actually a policy in our existing plan, and we want to continue to possibly look at that in the future. So this is an area we worked with the Waukesha County Health Department on. They conducted a brief audit of our 2006 plan and made some recommendations for changes, and we've incorporated almost all of those recommendations. So we talk a lot about the connections between land use, community design, and community health, and we also talk about health equity in underserved populations and investing in our neighborhoods, especially neighborhoods with low-income populations. And accessible health services, making sure that we have health services throughout the community that are linked by transit and multimodal opportunities. And then food deserts. Those are areas that don't currently have access to healthy food, and these things that would help with food deserts would include small-scale community gardens, mobile vendors with healthy food options, and farmers' markets. Sustainability, the legacies and strategic commitments are really the community's sustainability principles, and they touch on equity, the environment, and a healthy economy. We talk about resiliency to adverse events, including climate change and natural disasters, and an urban forestry management plan. There are new policies in the plan about possibly looking at an urban forestry management plan, and this would be modeled on Seattle's plan, which is really focused on how do we improve our urban forests and looking at maintenance and management issues. And then, lastly, innovation. A lot of these other topics that I touched on, we feel are pretty innovative, but we're also looking at innovative means of transitioning land in our urban growth area that's been difficult to annex in the past. How do we transition those into the city and finance those improvements? And then flexibility for the innovative housing types that I mentioned earlier. So just briefly, to touch on our population and employment projections and urban growth area boundaries, the county council recently did adopt these numbers, and the population numbers that they adopt are slightly higher than the mid-range forecast, which is what council had forwarded to the county, and that's 31,050 new people. The employment growth would be 22,641 new jobs, and this does not need a change to the urban growth area to accommodate, nor does it mean that there will be up zones to accommodate this growth. And so the South Kitec area and the South U Street would be reserve areas, and I'll just point those out on the map for folks that don't recall. This is South U Street, and then this is South Kitec. So South Kitec would be a new reserve area, and South U Street would remain in a reserve designation. And those are really the first places that we would look to if we need to accommodate our urban growth area, to, excuse me, to expand our urban growth area to accommodate future growth. So the Planning Commission's recommendation. We looked back, and over the past two years, we've had about 21 meetings with them, so we feel like we've had a fully vetted and really great process with them throughout this update. And on April 21st, they recommended a plan approval with about 28 changes, and you'll see those, like I said, in your chapters in purple. And that, most of them were pretty minor. I think the most discussion was had on the land use and housing chapters, which is to be expected. And they added more scrutiny of illegal units with our ADU ordinance update in the policy that staff had proposed, and then they also are proposing to remove inclusionary zoning policies. And this, what this means is that with a certain development, there would be a percentage of a development that would be required to be affordable for a certain amount of time. So those are just a few areas to look at as you're going through your, your update. Then the tentative city council review schedule, of course, today we're doing our briefing. On the 6th, we have a public hearing, and then a series of planning committee work sessions to review the chapters. We're proposing two chapters at a time. We did that with the Planning Commission, and it worked pretty well. And then wrapping up with a planning committee work session in August, but we do anticipate that there could be potentially another public hearing and more work sessions after that date. That doesn't mean that that has to be the last one. We can certainly extend that if needed. The update is due to the state by June 30th. However, you can submit a resolution showing substantial progress on your plan, and we plan to do that, and we definitely have shown substantial progress before the June 30th deadline. So these are just some websites and email addresses for public comments. We're happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohnerquist.
Yes, thank you, Pinky. So you mentioned that the infill toolkit, which wasn't included in the last go-around and was adopted since then, is going to be incorporated in some sense. Is there any policy language which talks about what to do with that toolkit? My personal opinion is that the toolkit was flawed and has some problems with implementation. There are changes that could be made to either restrict its use or focus its use, so it might be more useful. But is, is any kind of revision or reform or adjustment in the toolkit contemplated in the, in the comp plan as, at a policy language level?
I don't believe the policy says to review or modify it. It says continue to implement it.
Thank you.
The infill toolkit, we felt like our change to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance was sort of a move that we could, we could bring forward at this time. It would introduce more housing forms than we have in the past.
Councilmember Warner.
Yeah, the comment, sorry. Just to comment on, on the handout that you discussed about the Planning Commission's recommendations, it's got most discussion on land use and housing chapter, and it has about added more scrutiny of illegal units with ADU ordinance update. I was also under the impression that there was a lot of community input against adding detached ADUs in single-family neighborhoods. So I would have thought that that would have been...
There was a lot of community...
Put out there because, you know, that was my understanding.
Yes, those two points that I mentioned on the slide. So the policy that staff had included said to allow detached ADUs in certain neighborhoods, well, to, to review or consider allowing it. And with the ADU ordinance coming up, we wanted to put that out there. And so with the feedback that came through with the Planning Commission process, they, they modified that policy quite a bit to say that we want to look at our illegal units, we want to look at which areas are appropriate for detached ADUs. So they didn't take it off the books entirely, but they're just adding more scrutiny to what's out there now. And that was really, if you, if you look at the public comments, I think that, that addresses the, really, the bulk of their comments. I think the Planning Commission did listen to what they had to say, and it's reflected there.
Okay, I got four hands. So who thinks...
Just the first work session.
[laughing].
If we might just...
I'll start with Rick.
A clarification, I think Greg's got a site for you.
Yeah, just before we leave this topic, the original language and the Planning Commission's change to the policy about ADUs is on page 93 of your packet. It's number three under the housing chapter. So you can see what was originally proposed by staff, the language is crossed out, and then the modifications made by, or recommended by the commission, shown below with the underlined text. That's really the crux of that policy issue that we spent quite a bit of time on. And you're right, there was a lot of public testimony about that issue.
Okay, Councilmember Barker, then, Hammel.
So I don't see any of the planning commissioners here, but I did, I watched almost all of those meetings. And, and I suggest that if anybody's going to be really participating in the comprehensive plan process, that you go back, especially to chapters that you want us to pay attention to and watch them. And I wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to the Planning Commission for taking all of that time. They, they are volunteer. I don't know if a lot of people realize that, and, and they are long meetings and a couple times a month. So thank you to all the planning commissioners out there that did that, and thank you to the staff to get it this far. Now we'll take it.
And I should say, too, in my presentation, that I wanted to thank all of our staff. I mean, it's not just Rick, Greg and I, it's, there's a whole team of us, and a lot of them are staying out here, Chris Beehe and Moshe Quinn and Chris Cook, and it's, it's, there's a lot of us, Leslie Bryson, so it's definitely a city-wide department effort.
Councilmember Hammel.
This goes back to the, to the slide here about the scrutiny of illegal units. I'm just wondering how the rental registration and inspection process would interplay with this point that's being brought up here?
A very good point. Just through the process of getting things registered, we identified a number of units that are under enforcement now, and they were ones that we identified from our initial survey that did not respond to register with a property owner with multiple units, and I think we've issued 22 citations on that at this point. So we've made good progress there. Additionally, units that came back in that registered that had addresses that were never assigned by the city or the fire department, caught by the fire department. Clearly, they can care a lot about where addresses are because they want to find you if, if they need to get there. Those are in the queue waiting for our enforcement planner to research. Could be an omission, or it could be an issue where someone promulgated their own address. Usually, when we see... Usually when we see something like 25 and a half, that's not a traditional address, and we'll follow up on that. We anticipate a number of units coming forward as part of the registration process. We've published the roster of all of the 19,000 units that registered, so folks can search and see if they're there. Some are certainly excluded because they're not rental units, but others will be, and we will actively pursue them. It's challenging to do an inventory because in a sense, we've already done that. We've gone and asked all the units to register. Now we're perfecting that list to say is that the total list, or are there units out there have yet to register for a variety of reasons, either because they were unaware, that might be less plausible as time goes on, or they're unable to register because they were not legally established. But we'll keep following up on each one of those.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murphy.
I'm just wondering if, because it seems like this has gone so far and so well, but I'm just wondering if in the future, we could get like a joint session, for example, with the planning commission to hear more directly from them what their concerns are, especially for these major, you know, if we go into a comp plan overhaul, that would be a really good time for that.
Agreed. It's hard to digest what 21 meetings of planning commission has done and hope that we know exactly what's going on with your with your meetings. So we've got a fair amount to digest here in our plan. Councilmembers, any other additional questions, comments? No. Thank you all so much for putting all this together, and I realize it's a a big ticket item, so thank you. The fourth item in front of us today is future park funding. Council and the administration have explored, oh, did I, ooh, ooh, my, look at me jumping ahead. Okay, hold on one second. Wrong tab. Well, 98, okay, it is number four, though. So fourth item in front of us today is the Sustainable Services Process Update. The city is initiating several processes to explore strategies that can, if successfully implemented, ensure the sustainable provision of services for the community into the future. Staff will update council on both design, both process design and timing for each identified strategy. And again, I'm going to turn it over to Rick. It's the Rick Show today, our Director of Planning and Community Development.
Good to good to continue with you. As council will recall, this issue was introduced back in February. We asked Peter Moy from FCS to come in response to staff concerns as we were preparing the CFP for the concept of the plan update that's going to be coming before you. In doing that, we were concerned about future revenues against expenses, and we wanted to assess the potentials for us to be sustainable. That is, can we continue to provide the high level of service we have into the future reasonably without those inevitable hiccups that cause lapse of service delivery and challenges, more importantly than anything else to the community? We wanted to try to avoid that. Peter assessed the strategies and identified the gap between those revenues and expenses, and noted that some of the traditionally used strategies didn't remedy the issues, so much so that if you went to a wholesale 10% cut across the board, it didn't provide sustainable relief. It helped you for a little bit, but you're back in the same pickle in a few years. Our traditional responses, the technical responses that jurisdictions have always done over time, only postponed for a short time that issue from becoming manifest and creating a crisis, and you wanted to avoid those kind of crises. This is a result of the Great Recession, and it has had a profound effect on government. Quite simply, our traditional solutions will no longer work. I should note that Bellingham is not alone in this issue. This does not reflect fiscal mismanagement by anyone. There has been a significant change in how funding occurs. Cities can no longer count on the state or the feds in need to support local services. This afternoon, we talked to you about the need for shelter. That is, in in some part, directly linked to federal policies dealing with mental health and the disassembling of the mental health network and placing the burden on communities to provide those services, when before we had support from Washington or Olympia. I should also note that Seattle, I think we'll all agree, is one of the most red-hot real estate markets in the country. I think they counted 240 lift cranes working on separate projects out there. Seattle asked its departments, all of the city services, to prepare for the budget discussion coming ahead with 2% to 4% reductions in their expenses. So I'm going to say something is amiss here. If you have increasing revenues, a red-hot, white-hot real estate market, gainful unemployment by decreasing revenues, it's because they're covering so much more. And those are the issues that we face here, too. And in doing that, we have to take advantage of the work we've done before and find appropriate strategies to address the issues as they come forward. As council recall, we briefed you at your retreat on the 16th, and you provided direction on the 17th of April to identify a suite of different approaches that could be used to address this issue. These approaches, thank you so much, Marie. I know I'd still be up there fumbling around trying to find it, so I'll defer to expertise on this one. And you gave us direction, you said these seem like reasonable things to explore, that we should investigate them, and that we should come back to you with a schedule and detail on the processes, and that's what we're doing today. We're coming back to you with some nascent processes, and specifically a way of addressing how they can be employed. One of the things to note is that while these are all viable approaches to be investigated, we acknowledge not all of them will succeed. They may not be ripe, we may not be able to obtain partners who can help us with them, they may not provide the benefit we are hopeful for, but you move down that point till you reach a stopping point, and then by mutual agreement, you move to the next strategy. The whole point here is we need to be mindful of the countdown timer we are on. As described, we have been preemptive on this. The city has adequate reserves to accommodate a number of budget cycles before we hit crisis, and that gives us a chance to be, while slightly agitated, focused on on the issues at hand, and the sense of urgency grows with each day. We acknowledged that not all of them will reach the bottom, the finish line, however, the right one or two can provide substantial relief. And if the goal, as adopted by all of us, is to provide continuation of city services, the high level of services, and be sustainable so that we maintain our resources, we'll find the suite of approaches that will work. It should be note that we do have a, I don't know if you can call up the Gantt chart, is that possible? It's the other, the other attachment in the packet.
Oh, okay, yep.
Okay, I think, there we go. We've taken a preliminary cut at those that can be initiated. As you'll note, we can't initiate them all at the same time. There are some dependencies, but moreover, we have limited resources on what we can do. The same folks, in many cases, are sitting at the table for many of these issues. So towards that end, I I think I'll point a couple of things out. First, on the regional fire authority, a very good initiative to be investigated, might be of good service for continuity for for the city, involves participation with at least one other district outside of the city, but it takes time. And you could see it takes almost a year and a half before you get to the point of being able to make a reasoned decision on that. And that would be started at the end of next quarter. It gives us time now to sort of get the ducks in line and be able to move forward on it. The NPD is something that this body has been discussing, and is a tool that could be used and employed to provide sustainable funding. Due to the overlap with other personnel and also the nature of it, the library annexation, we propose to defer to the second half of '17. There are other processes that are a little more timely to initiate. Doesn't mean it's inappropriate, just means we need to get to it when we have time and resources. The museum is something that will take some time. That's one looking at the amount of support the city provides, trying to find a way to maintain the services provided museum, but with alternative funding. It'll take about a year to come to conclusion. The MS levy, the council has acted on that one. That's been directed to the county council to consider putting on the ballot. We'll know by the end of the year if that will have traction and if that will be able to meet significant goals. And as as discussed, it's a spot of significant benefit to the community and significant benefit to sustainability for our services. We are ongoing with lean. That's one of those issues where not all of the solutions are just raising money or curtailing services. It's finding out how we could be more efficient at what we do, and the city is energetically approaching the next review, that's development standards, and that's a public works review with participation from from my department and others. It could have some significant benefits in terms of operational costs, and we see that coming forward. The Center for Excellence in Grants and our contract management identified, again, the resources needed to approach that are spoken for till later in 2018. Similarly, the Aquatic Center and Civic Complex Contract Management would be started probably early in '17. It's timely to do that. Some of the resources needed for those processes are engaged in other issues right now, and we'll see what the outcome would be at the end of the quarter and how that moves forward. Similarly, the cemetery management, which would look for a way of lessening some of the ongoing costs, would be deferred to the second half of '17. We are working on a approach for surplus properties. One of the things on that, and we'll be coming for counsel for briefing on that with greater specificity in the next month or so, is we'd like to develop a rigor that could be applied yearly and not reinvent the wheel. In essence, this is a repeatable process. We can put our properties to that could assess changes and see if at the end of the day, any properties come out that are no longer necessary. It does require a higher degree of labor upfront, but I think long term is every year we could regularly run it and see if changes have occurred. So I mean, it gives us a very good tool into the future, and it's worth spending the time upfront now. I also do know that the Mount Baker Theater Agreement is currently in play and will be discussed. The first alternative process is the levy lid lift, and that's tentative, dependent on the results of some of the earlier actions. It's something that could be investigated as a way of sort of an omnibus to address a variety of issues of import and could be very strategic. However, it's not initiated till we see what happens in the last two quarters. So that's kind of the overview of the process schedule. We've provided a matrix. That matrix provides some degree of focus on each of the processes, sort of the participants, how the public would be involved, some general questions and timeline. That's a work in progress, because in order for us to be successful, we have to be extraordinarily nimble. And as one decision becomes made, we need to respond to that and say, do we need to change this process? Do we need to move things up? How can we best serve the long-term interest on that way? So I and my colleagues on the LOS team would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the proposed process and their sequence, as well as the methodology that we hope to employ. And as these processes become mounted, you'll notice there's placeholders for council member participation. We'd be coming back to this body before launch and asking for participation on those specific processes.
Councilmember Hemel.
When when does the the shortfall really begin in earnest?
It's it's somewhat imprecise because it's it's fluid. If revenues increase, we might push it out a bit. If expenses that are unforeseen occur, it comes back. We've talked about.
Well, we're at a deficit now.
Well, we are, we are at a deficit at this point, but that deficit's been made up by the surplus that's above the 12% minimum. It's when we hit the 12% minimum by our own policies, we consider that the shortfall. So you have some degree of discretion above that. Council in the past has adopted budgets that have used a portion of that surplus. When we hit the 12%, and that's in two to four years, two to four years, depending on a variety of factors. Certain actions that the voters or this body might take might prolong that out, others might, you know, that are beyond our control, might make it happen sooner.
Councilmember Littlequist, then Hemel.
Thanks, Pinky. So, Rick, you said this is experienced by many cities across Washington State, even hot cities like Seattle. And you also said that this is partly due to the consequence of the recession, which caused many cities to eat through their reserves, far, far worse than Bellingham did. I think you're right. I think that's part of it. It took away a lot of our cushion. It brought us down lower than we would have been, which is sort of what reserves are for. But I think there's maybe a more fundamental problem, and it has to do with the Tim Iman Tax Initiative, which has made it so property taxes, which used to be relied upon by city governments, now grow at a rate that's less than inflation. So in terms of real dollars and proportion of money for the city, that portion of our revenue base has been shrinking, shrinking, shrinking steadily for years. I think that's the structural problem. And the reason why I bring that up is the the levy lid lift seems to be the most natural way to undo that fundamental problem. What you have written here, it's it's the most kind of like universal and comprehensive and adaptable solution out of all of them, it's the most flexible. But you have written here that it's a, the first reserve process to be initiated if others are stalled or terminated. I, which others are stalled or terminated? I don't think they should wait to be last in line, maybe not first in line. Which are the others which you think it would need to to wait to settle out? EMS might be one of them. What are the others that might want to settle out first?
I I was going to say the NPD is one. If the NPD is is not viable at this time, then you, and the EMS levy does not get traction with the public, you might look for a levy lid lift to combine some of those aspects that both the NPD and the EMS might have done.
Thanks.
Thank you. Just going back to the shortfall, are we looking at a $5 million issue, or what specifically? You talked about this before, but just different numbers.
Brian Hinshaw, Finance Department. I think Rick said it best, it is fluid. I mean, it is only a forecast, and so I'll just remind you of the assumptions that went into it. And when Peter Moy did that, he took the 2015 budget and how we ended 2015, and we just forecasted that out. So two big assumptions there, no new staff, no new programs, and then we continued out our operating expenses into the future. And that's the forecast that is two to four years out before we would get down to that reserve. So the amount of money is between $4 and $5 million, and we are currently running a budgeted deficit, as the mayor said. But there's a lot of unknowns in that, how fast revenues will continue. We we do have economic growth, and we've had economic growth since 2010 in Bellingham. So it's not a revenue problem, it is an expense problem, that the expenses continue to outpace revenue. There's contributing things like the Tim Iman Initiative, but we continue to add levels of service in Bellingham and add to what we already have. So there's a lot of unknowns that go into that forecast, and that's the number right now where we're looking at. But any of the items that are on here that could contribute to that and and reduce the dependency on the general fund, we'll then postpone that and push that out into the future. So again, it's a proactive measure, it's not an emergency, we're not reacting to anything today. We are trying to have the conversation to prevent this and push this out as long as we can, and to look at all alternatives so that it doesn't become a problem where we're having to make, you know, decisions based on an emergency-type situation. But there's a lot of needs. Earlier presentations today, those those things with the low barrier, all of that needs to be factored into it, and we have a lot of initiatives. I don't think it's realistic that we would not add staff, and we will not have a new program this year, but we need to keep that in mind as we're going into the budget.
If I might just add to that, I think we we have to acknowledge that in order to preserve our options, it's critical in the future that we look through a lens that tries to balance the high level of service we want to provide with the financial sustainability of the general fund. So I mean, all of the decisions really should be framed with that in mind, saying, how is this affecting our level of service, and how is this affecting our general fund? Because that's the way I think we can achieve. Because that's the way I think we can achieve sort of uninterrupted service delivery.
Councilmember Murphy.
I'd just like to say I'm glad that we're going through this to hopefully improve our financial viability and reliability. I just have a really small favor to ask. When we were doing outreach about this, could we please not use acronyms since these are pretty new ideas? People might not know what MPD stands for or LOS stands for. So, I just appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any other thoughts, questions? Well, I love the layout of this. I love these matrix and graphs and timelines. Makes me happy. It's easy to understand and I can figure out what's in front of me. So, thank you for laying it out that way. Appreciate this. And it's nice to have the opportunity to be proactive instead of being in crisis and trying to figure these things out. So, I think we're in a pretty great place to be able to have that opportunity. So, thank you for that work on that. Any other comments, questions, thoughts? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Rick. You are now off the hook. So, the fifth item in front of us today is future parks funding. Council and its administration have explored two different mechanisms for future parks funding. A traditional property tax levy in the form of the current greenways model and a metropolitan park district model. Both use property tax as the vehicle for revenue and both require a vote of the people. The primary differences are the amount levied, the governance model, and the duration of the levy. The attached memorandum addresses the administration concerns on pursuing a futures greenways for levy model, and the following resolution is per council direction. I am going to turn this over to Mayor Kelly Linville to do an introduction.
And I just wanted to take a moment to clarify something that has caused, I think, a lot of consternation on the council. The mayor did not clearly communicate with the staff to make sure that what the council wanted was in the packet instead of what had been submitted. And I just want you to know that that was, I'll take 100% responsibility on my part that I did not clearly say... I clearly said, "We can't do this one," but then I must have messed it up somewhere along the line. So, what was intended to be in there was what the council had asked for, which is a resolution asking for a greenways for levy to be put on the ballot in November. I did check with Gary Baker today, and there is 90% possibility that there also will be the transportation levy on the ballot. And I just thought I'd give you that information. Secondly, as an elected official, I get to have an opinion, which you are all used to hearing. So, I apologize if my opinion was a little harsh this morning, but when I talk about concerns about a greenways levy, I think that matches up with what I have in this memo. Now, if that resolution changes, then some of this may not apply. So, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm sorry if there was any confusion. I apologize for that.
Did we want to go over any of these things in here? Or do we just want to open the discussion up around...
I prefer that you have your discussion because it sounds like maybe there's obviously a different resolution that's going to come forward. And there isn't any reason to talk about this until we're talking about what's actually going to be proposed.
Okay. Councilmember Bornman.
Yeah. Just so people are aware, we originally asked staff to prepare a resolution for Greenways Four to bring it forward. And through whatever happened, Seth Fleetwood had contacted our legal department and offered a draft resolution that could be used as a template. And most of it is really good stuff, but it wasn't for to go in this packet. But that's what got put in the packet. So, some of the criticism of it, the dates and stuff were put in this that... Because it wasn't supposed to be put in in this form. So, I just want to make that clarification so it doesn't reflect badly on the staff because that wasn't for on Seth Fleetwood because that was not the intention of this going in. But that said, this might have been a good thing that happened because of this, there was some criticisms that came out of this that could be easily remedied. And I just want to... I don't want to hog this, but I would like to go over a few, if that's okay, about some of the things that came up over the weekend in terms of talking with Mr. Fleetwood and him talking with some of the Greenways Committee people and other people, you know, and him. But, you know, Seth and I had sat down and talked, and there were changes that might be in line with what the mayor was concerned with. And would it be okay if I...
What, the wishes of the council? Is everyone okay with that? Head nods would be fine? All right, please. Councilmember Bornman.
One of the concerns that came up, and I think it came up from the Parks Director with Mr. Fleetwood, had to do with the timing and the times on this. This one resolution indicated 10 years. So, on page 109, under Section 1 Findings E, there was, it listed on the last sentence, "over a period of 10 years." And evidently, there was some concern that that would extend longer than the current Metropolitan Parks District for the South Side. But if it was seven years, it would kind of align with that. And that was the, the seven years was what we ran the first greenways with. So, there is a pattern for that. And so, that was one of the issues that had come up. One of the other issues related to, let me see now, on Section 2, Use of Funds, that would be on page 110, number three. The last part of this, well, I'll read it. Maintenance and operation, approximately 25% of the proceeds and interest on proceeds of the levy are intended to be dedicated to ongoing maintenance, operation, and capital replacement needs of properties acquired or developed with current or prior greenways levy funds. Even though this would help, the maintenance, that 25% would help defer some of our current general fund cost, there was concern that it was limited to greenways property. So, we had discussed a change in that language that would go, let me see, dedicated to ongoing maintenance, operation, and capital replacement needs of city park properties as opposed to that limitation. So, that 25% could, you know, it would make it easier to administer and use of that. And let me see, was there a... Well, there were some with the language to correspond with the seven years, changes and things. And I do have, with some of those changes, do have a clean copy of that. But I think those would help address some of those concerns, showing that there's 25% going towards maintenance. It would be the right date and limiting to seven years. So, it would correspond with the other, the ending of the other Metropolitan Parks District. And so, that's what we had discussed.
Councilmember Barker, then Lillquist.
I think under the funding as well, exactly what you said for maintenance, but under development as well as property acquisition to allow that openness that we're going to follow with our Parks Pro Plan and not limit to only greenways. And I think why it's really fitting in speaking with some people that are advocates of greenways and other people that are just advocates of getting parks and spaces that are currently underserved is the importance is that we really have a focus on equity in the park system. And if we only allow these monies to go to previously purchased, we may lose out on some really key pieces to connect trails or to have parks or develop parks in areas that have been incredibly underserved through this entire process. So, I think they align very well, especially as we're going into our Parks Pro Plan and to talk about level of service. And to me, it sounded as though the greenways advocate, as well as other constituents, would be able to support that without the specific wording of greenways. So, I think I would, I guess, do I need to make a motion to, are we gonna, do we need to make a motion on the changes to this current or to ask staff to bring back a...
Not ours.
How does that work? I need help. I'm a new one.
At some point, I think if we want to move this forward as it was with changes, we would need to. Right now, I just want, I brought these up just to throw it up first for discussion and then, you know, I would consider that. Now...
Councilmember Lillquist.
Thank you. Okay. So, those are, I think, two important changes, Terry. I really, I do definitely support the one where broadening it, not just narrowing it to only those properties that happen to be acquired with greenways dollars, making it more generally city parks properties, adding some flexibility. I kind of resist shorting it to seven years. We've, 10 years is a good number. Seven years goes by fast. We've seen that with other levies. On the other hand, if the reason for shorting it to seven years is to add flexibility for when there's a sun setting of an existing Metropolitan Park District, that's a benefit. I like creating more options that could occur seven years down the line. So, I prefer the 10 years for just kind of aesthetic and planning reasons, but a seven year horizon is probably okay.
Councilmember Hamel.
Just expanding on Terry's comments regarding item number three, Maintenance and Operations. So, 25% of the proceeds with this updated resolution or amended resolution would go towards any park property, not just greenways. So, that, if my math is correct, that provides $1.2 million a year in general fund relief. So, if this were to go on the ballot and be in front of voters and were to be successful, and if EMS were to go in front of voters and be successful, that's $2.5 million in general fund relief. So, about halfway to what Mr. Henshaw had indicated would be our future shortfall, and that would be done in the first year.
I'm still struggling with how exactly the MPD versus the greenways and how we're solving all of our level of service discussions through this. I'm kind of still a little uncertain. Maybe you guys are clearer than I am, but I feel like it's a little vague to me. And I almost feel as though we need another work session, please don't shoot me, on the MPD because I don't quite, I don't fully understand. And I know it's in the scope, what we were just talking about for planning, to look at this a little bit more. It says immediate discussion. And I almost want to wait until I have a better understanding of what that actually is, if these two things can be combined and overlaid, or whether one excludes from the other. And I'm a little uncomfortable of my understanding of both of those. Mayor Kelly and then my Councilmember Lillquist.
One of the things I'd suggest, and I was just asking Leslie, in order to make a decision based on what you'd like to do, whether it's greenways or Metropolitan Park District or the length, one of the questions I asked Leslie, and I don't expect her to answer it today, I think she could answer it this evening, and also, Brian, is just making sure that all the facts are clear about how much we actually would save and what the need is. Those are the only two things that I think maybe you're missing from this discussion that I think should be a part of it. And we're happy, I'd love to talk to you. We'd be happy to bring that forward before you do a final vote, not to necessarily, well, I mean, just so you have all the information to see if the assumptions you're making on the greenways effects are what you think they're going to be. And if they are, then it's the council's prerogative to do that. So, maybe there's an opportunity to bring those facts back to you this evening.
And another thing, and I don't think we can answer this right now, but with greenways, if property acquisition is at 33% and maintenance and operations is at 25%, whether that actually solves our problems? Because everything that I see over and over again is our top is development and maintenance and operations. And I know we are missing some links, and there is some acquisition that still needs to happen, but is this equitable to achieve the goals that we need to under our park plan?
And that's the information I'd like to be able to bring back to you tonight instead of just shooting from the hip right now.
Yeah, that's what it feels like. And Councilmember Bornman.
Yeah. I was gonna say, we know these two can work together. That's not, that's not an issue. Does this solve all of our problems? We know it doesn't solve all of our problems. But we know the Metropolitan Parks District isn't ready to go right now. There's still a whole lot of details because this is new. It's out there. There's still a lot of work that's going to have to be done before something could be presented to the public and sold to the public and things. The greenways proposal has been out there and in front of the public for a while now. In fact, we were, Jack Weiss was looking at putting it on back in November. At a retreat, not this retreat, the one before, we went over the priorities at that time and talked about it, and they've been out there. We are able to put this on at this, you know, in November. And if it, and when it passes, that I really don't think that would be a problem, is it'll actually reduce the people's taxes from what it is now as opposed to increase it. But when the Metropolitan Parks District, when we have further discussions and continue working on it, because I think that is, it's probably ultimately a good solution, we can go forward with a smaller amount at that time, say the 25 cents, which we'd get it up to. And when this lapses, if that other passes, then we can look at the increase to that full amount. And so, we know they can be merged with it. You know, it's just a matter of, do we... And I think the main issue before us right now, one, regardless of what we do in terms of the resolution, I don't think we can pass a resolution right now anyway. It would have to go for staff to look at and see if they got any holes in it and bring it back for a final thing. But we could vote on whether we want to put a greenways levy on the ballot for November and then bring back the completed resolution that will, after staff has gone through it and given us a chance to continue working that, if they find problems with it, and then pass that resolution. But that way, it would let the Greenways Committee know, get out there and start selling. And now, we got to put together these detail, I mean, the last final details of it. And just an idea, I want to throw that out to council as an idea, because I think the support's there for it.
Councilmember Lillquist.
I kind of wish you'd called me before Terry because he took all my best stuff. This has been, as Terry said, a lengthy on and off discussion over quite some time. And I kind of disagree with, well, I don't want to see it framed this way, a future parks funding. Greenways is not a parks funding program. Even its full amount is barely a quarter of the full budget. It's not a parks funding program. It focuses on a certain set of needs. Greenways is not intended to balance the city's budget. That's not its purpose. We shouldn't look to it to do that. But greenways is intended to address the public's, our public's need for open space, for parks, for trails. And it's also been reprioritized. This is almost a flip of previous greenways where we recognized rather than acquiring more property... acquiring more properties that can't be developed and can't be maintained, we need to start addressing the development of properties that are undeveloped, and we need to start taking care of the properties that are. Greenways addresses that. So that's not only solving the budget, but it's solving a problem we have where the Parks Department simply doesn't have the funds to do those things. And to get them done, they would have to begin competing with the rest of the budget, with the general fund. So it's not intended to balance the budget, but I think it addresses a budget problem anyway. This reprioritized version, or any reprioritized version would do that. And I don't think now is the time for an MPD, certainly not as talked about in the level of service discussion. That's a tax hike. And right now is not the time for a tax hike. This is a time I'd like to put forward a reduced tax rate and see if the public understands that we still have priorities, but let's come in maybe a little bit lower with, and aim a little bit differently. I think it's time to begin a six-month discussion, public discussion, campaign discussion, on whether or not we renew it with these new priorities at this new level. I really do think that we need to be sensitive to the fact that we are asking, the school district has its needs, EMS system is running out of money, that needs to be supported. I really would want to come in with a smaller level for Greenways, to really be sensitive. This weekend, I read a really kind of depressing article in the New York Times, the, I think it was the Fed, the National Fed did a survey of people's household economic situations. And one of the questions they asked is, if you had a $400 emergency expense, how would you pay for it this month? And could you pay for it this month? And 47%, half of all households said, you know what, we don't know how we'd pay for it. We might have to sell something or not pay for something, or I just couldn't do it. That's a reality. I've had some of those months. So now's not the time for an MPD for a whole lot of reasons. I think we have a long time to discuss whether or not we added in at some point at a lower level. But at this point, you know, I think adjusted with some of the changes you're talking about, Terry, I think it's a reasonable proposal to have the public consider.
Councilmember Knutson and Mayor Kelly.
Okay. I want to first of all thank the mayor for bringing forward the MPD discussion and Rick, and when we first talked about it at the retreat. But I firmly believe we're at a point now where the best way to go is what Terry's talking about, what Michael's talking about, and that is to do a Greenways Four, get that on the books, get going with that, and have a long-term discussion on MPD. Seattle discussed it for quite a while before they adopted it. I think it's the future for us, but it's going to take a longer time than what we have now. My biggest fear would be to let Greenways lag off and then try to restart it again. You cannot say Bellingham anymore without Greenways coming up because we started something here years ago that has gone nationwide, and it's something that we cannot risk. But I fully understand why the staff came forward and why the mayor was coming forward with the Metropolitan Park District because it is in our future. I think we all agree with that. It's just the timing. And I, like Terry and I, have been through the Greenway situation before. The last thing we need to do is get into a battle now between Greenways and the Metropolitan Park District. That's the, not the good way to go. And I think nobody's trying to do that. I just think we need to move forward with Greenways, and the sooner we do it, the better we'll be in the future.
I just wanted to clarify, I think I need to do that a lot these days. I actually don't, I mean, I think Michael's absolutely right. I was looking at a way to fund the parks forever, not to do a short-term fix. And I still would like to bring some information back. I certainly, as I have with every other proposal that the councils adopted, whether I agreed with it or not, I have always implemented them the way you wanted me to. So I guess I want to just say that, that they are different, Michael, and I agree with you. And I also was not suggesting that we put anything on the ballot in November. So I believe we could have taken the time to have some of those discussions. So just so people know, those were two things. And then the third thing is, obviously, I am concerned about the cumulative effect because of all the responsibilities we have as a city for services that we need to implement in addition to our park system. And I was thinking that that would give us some time to look at all the different pots of money that we assess to all the different people that live in our community and see if there was a way to, well, I guess harmonize is one word, but a way to make them work together so that we're very sensitive of the lowest-income people and the middle-income people and the working families in our community. But it was just a clarification, and I don't expect to get in a debate with anybody.
So for me, I just wanted to add that I definitely agree with points from councilmember Lillicust and Bornham, but I do want to bring us back to the fact that Greenways, you're right, is not meant to solve, is not here to solve our problem. However, we are here to solve our problem, and our problem right now is level of service. And I'm concerned about doing things that are not going to solve some of our challenges. And we do have challenges in our parks. And we can't develop parks that we already own. We don't have enough money for maintenance and operation. And so I'm just concerned that we're going to go down the same path and not be solving some of the problems that we need to be addressing. And that's the part that's making me nervous. I love Greenways. I love our parks. It's my favorite part of living here. But I want to make sure that all of our parks are getting their needs met and everybody's getting the same distribution. And that is my biggest heartburn around making decisions on this right now. Just laying that out there.
Councilmember Bornham.
Yeah, just a couple things. I want to come back to, this Greenways proposal that has come forward from the Greenways Committee is the first Greenways that will, you know, dedicate like 25% towards maintenance of the different parks. Before, on our last one, we had money that went in, but it wasn't able to, you know, it was kind of, wasn't discretionary in terms of how that could be used for maintenance. This removes that, and so it does go directly towards and can go directly towards the maintenance of that. So that, it does help with part of our problem with that. I just want to throw out one other thing, and this isn't about this resolution or anything, but it's just Greenways in general. And Greenways, when it came up, I mean, this is, and I think it's one of the reasons why it's so loved, is this was a true grassroots kind of program. This comes from the community. This comes up from the community. It's not from top-down per se, although we got our Pro Plan out there and they're looking at that now. But when it first came up, this came up as a grassroots program, and it has maintained a lot of that element of grassroots, you know, of, it starts with the citizens with ideas and issues that they want to see put in this, and then it comes up to, you know, and it goes through parks and it goes through us to look at and refine and bring forward. And, you know, Bellingham likes that kind of citizens' involvement in getting these kinds of things done. And I think just one of the things that has made it so endearing to this community is that grassroots element, is the citizens' involvement on Grass, on Greenways Committees and their recommendations. Yes, it always comes back to the council to make that decision, but having that element, you know, has been very important. I just forgot to mention it before, and I think it's an important element of it.
Councilmember Murphy.
One of the things that I just think about that's so simple is what's most likely to succeed in our community? And to me, the Metropolitan Park District is such a novel idea, definitely the way that cities are going, but it's still so new. And so we just have more assurances that a Greenways levy would succeed in our community because our community has overwhelmingly supported this. So I'm lending my support to Greenways.
Councilmember Barker.
I think it's important to go back a little bit and remember, we're just putting something out there if this ends up going through to, just like the EMS levy, to let the voters decide. Here's an opportunity, these are some, this is something that we can do. The Greenways Committee has been, I think, very flexible. Rick is here, so I'll say very nimble in how they're willing to look at this to make sure it goes through, very dedicated. And the voters will tell us if this goes forward. I think, I totally agree, the Metropolitan Parks District, for me, is something that it makes a lot of sense, but when I go out and start trying to explain it, there's a lot of confusion, and we do need some time so voters know that we took the time with them to educate them and to take them through the process. It's why I don't want to stop the discussion on MPD. It's why I would support doing, whether it's seven or eight years, so that we would be poised if our community was wanting to go toward a Metropolitan Parks District. And in November, if this goes through, the voters are going to tell us either we're done, we're taxed, 42% of us are living already difficult, and we can't even support Greenways anymore, then it'll be very telling for us, or we won't go forward with an EMS. I don't think that will happen. I think both of these are, have been vetted extremely well over time. EMS is a great example of partnerships and people working together, and so is Greenways. So I think at this point, for me, the conversation for MPD needs to continue. We need to keep on with education. We need to really look at our level of service and determine, are there ways that we can look at that so it's not so darn expensive? And at this point, hopefully, get something on the ballot so Greenways can get out there and see what the voters tell us. And maybe we will be looking at spring or next November, going into an MPD and going back to the voters. But I think it's very important to remember, all we're doing is hopefully putting something out there that's most likely to succeed and then letting you, the voters, tell us what you want.
Councilmember Hamill.
I'm going to move to put a Greenways Four levy in front of voters on this November's election, but I would request that staff incorporate the changes that were provided to us in this newest updated document that reflects some of the concerns that the mayor's, mayor had regarding her specific concerns on page 107. I do want to mention too that, that the 25% for the maintenance is a significant change from previous Greenways, that they had no maintenance support in those previous versions. So I think that might address part of what your concerns might be. And realizing that it's not, as councilmember Lillicust mentioned, that it's not a tool to solve the budget, but we do, in fact, as you indicated, have that issue, but it does speak to that. So it's $1.2 million of general fund relief. So that is my motion, is to put this on the ballot.
Second.
Can I, can I just correct something? I think there's a misinterpretation that if 25% in the Greenway levy goes towards operation and maintenance, that we won't need that general fund money. I don't believe that's true because we're already getting about three, we're already taking about $300,000 out of the current levy to pay existing staff, so we'll need to continue to do that to pay operation and maintenance staff. We'd like to increase the amount of staff that we're, that we have because we're already behind. And then we need to take care of our capital maintenance needs, which typically is not general fund dollars. So I just want to make sure that there's an understanding that that's not going to save the general fund $1.2 million a year because that's not going to help.
And I did, used to work on Greenways, so, on the committee, so I'm very clear that there was no operations and maintenance at one time. And I would tell you if it would came back this way, I would have just said no. So this is a change. I'm just, I would like more dollar specification on what that is, what that really means to our budget, to our general fund exactly, like those numbers that you talked. I'd like some more clarity on what that really means for us and if that 25% is going to be significant enough. So that is my, that's where I want numbers clarification. Any, councilmember Bornham?
Well, one thing, we know this isn't going to erase any need for general fund, funding. That was never, I don't think, Greenways intention, and right now it's not the intention of this, this going forward. That's why we want the discussion, at least I want, and I know some others, and I think maybe all of us, want that discussion to go forward of the Metropolitan's Parks District. And when we, in the future, as we get to that, you know, and it's ready and the, and the public is looking like they're willing and they understand what we're doing with that, then I'm willing to consider that because I think it's important that we're doing that. And I applaud you for, Mayor, for bringing this forward. I just, you know, don't think the time is right, and I know you've changed it on your proposal from last, our last meeting for November to, to in the spring, but I still don't think we're ready. This is, I think, is ready and the time is ready and the workforce and support out there is ready. So I'm going to support this.
Councilmember Barker.
Well, I do know in our retreat, we kind of made, felt like we discussed that if a council member was feeling like they needed a little more time, we would be understanding of that. Now, if that time is just this evening, the mayor has said that she'll bring back some, some numbers and we can look at that because maybe the percentages need to change if it wants to actually try to solve some of these other issues. So I, I don't know if we have to wait till we're done with, with Dan's, but maybe it's just, if we get through this, we can make a motion to ask staff to bring us a resolution that, that reflects what we've said, and then to give time for staff to talk to us this evening, and then we can decide if we want to make a vote or if we want to wait longer. But I know there's a motion on the table now, so I need help being new to Robert's rules.
That's the motion that's on the table.
Well, his motion was to put something on the ballot.
Yep.
Versus to get, is that the same difference, Uste? No.
No, it'd have to be a different motion.
Yeah, so I'll let this one go through and I'd like, I'd like to warrant that because I know there will be times when I also will need a little bit of time to reflect, and it's not that much time at this point, but I think it's enough that you could get some more information before we, you're forced to make a vote right now. So I will probably not support only because of that.
Councilmember Lillicust.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some, I'll try to do some clarifying of my own. I know one councilmember said they were nervous that we don't have the funds to develop parks and don't have funds to maintain them. Two-thirds of this money is set aside for development and maintenance. Two-thirds, that's huge. That's money which would not otherwise be available. If the voters don't approve this, that money does not exist. So, and here's a clarification, as the Parks Director said, this isn't like new saved money that's suddenly going to be available for other needs, but it is resources that wouldn't otherwise be there. It's a hole that would otherwise be unfilled. So filling a hole isn't the same thing as getting new money, but it is filling a hole. There's an empty hole right now that we cannot fill because we do not have the general fund monies to do it, which is develop the properties we've already acquired and to maintain the ones we already have. This fills the hole. It's not the same thing as brand-new money, but filling holes is good.
If this were not Greenways exclusion, because right now, this money currently only goes to Greenways.
I'm assuming that we make that change.
That's what we've asked.
So councilmember Hamill, if you could restate your motion.
Yeah, so I moved that we put a Greenways Four levy on the ballot in the general election in 2016 November with the changes that are indicated in this updated amended version, which specifically addresses your issue where they are, this is a really long motion now, but where the Greenway dollars are not restricted to Greenways-only programs, they are open to any properties purchased by the city consistent with the Pro Plan.
Let's try that again. Your motion is to put it on the ballot with the amendments that are advised in our council packet.
And this, this is an amended document that councilmember Bornham was discussing.
Okay. Which we don't have all of us in front of us.
Yeah, right.
Councilmember Bornham.
Yes. Councilmember Hamill was referring to the ones that I had read in, which is, will be part of this and given to legal staff to review. And would, in your motion, would, could we include that motion pending review by legal staff, you know, that way? Because we have to do pretty much, you know, make sure.
Yeah, I would include the, a review by legal staff.
Okay, so a motion in front of us to put the, to have staff bring us a resolution for a proposal for the November ballot with changes and amendments that have been for a proposal for the November ballot with changes and amendments that have been, that are prescribed here with a review by legal.
Yeah, correct.
Did I include all of that information now? Okay?
Well, I like that motion, so if you're agreeing with that, that's a little different than you originally said.
Yeah, that's.
That works for me because we're just asking staff to bring back a resolution.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're bringing, okay, so we're asking, our, our request is to bring back a resolution that this, from the staff with the changes and recommendations and review by legal.
By next meeting or?
By tonight.
There's no way that can happen tonight.
When is the, does anybody have the deadline on when we need to put it on the ballot? August 2nd?
I think the Greenways Committee wanted a six, full six months for a campaign.
Oh, no, I understand that. That's, yeah, that's why I brought it up.
Right.
Alan Merron from Legal.
Thank you, Alan.
We could bring it back next council meeting. One of the things we did, we would do is have our outside bond counsel review the language, so I don't think that we could get something back to you tonight. We could get you something for next council meeting.
Okay, so are we all clear on the motion? Yes? Okay.
Sure.
Any more discussion? No? All right, ready? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolu, uh, motion passes 7-0. And again, that is just for a resolution to come forward about a proposition to be on the ballot, okay? So we are going to move into older new business. Apparently, we're taking a break. What's that? No, we do, oh, approval of minutes first. Let's do our minutes. Okay, so we have one set of minutes in front of us. This is for the committee meetings for May, that was the?
May 2nd.
May 2nd, thank you very much.
Move approval.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0, approval of minutes. Older new business. So before we start older new business, what we're going to do is, last council meeting, they, some things that happened prompted questions in regards to what our policy is in regards to bringing forth initiatives that are going to be on the ballot but were not written by us, and also our role as nonpartisan representatives on the dais. So Peter Raffado is going to clarify what, what those, clarity on the initiatives and the nonpartisan roles, and I'll turn that over to Peter.
Yeah, Peter Raffado, Legal Department, and much of this, I'm sure, is in the way of a reminder, but state law and PDC guidance restricts the use of city property, time, resources for supporting or opposing ballot measures or candidates. And that applies to city staff across the board. It applies to elected officials when they're using city property and city time, and it also covers city council meetings. And that's the reason in our guidelines or public comment that we have, one of those restrictions is supporting ballot measures or candidates. Ultimately, I think the best way to avoid it for city council is to kind of avoid explicit discussion of partisan politics. That isn't what the rule states. The rule is you cannot support or oppose candidates or ballot measures, but in general, that's a good broad guideline. There is one exception for city council, and we've done this in the past, and I'm sure we'll do it again in the future, and that is that the city council can pass a resolution in support of or in opposition to a ballot measure after the council sets a public hearing, does proper notice with the ballot number and the ballot title. And in the past, well, then, and then the resolution would be acted upon after all, all parties have an opportunity to express viewpoint, either in support of or in opposition to whatever measure is being considered. In the past, we have done pro and con statements to set that up. That's not required by state law explicitly. I think it's a practice that the city has followed to kind of go above and beyond with respect to the PDC guidance. An example of this was, I don't know, less than a year ago with the county charter amendments we had, we set that up with a pro and con public hearing. It had been fully noticed, and then council passed, I think, a couple resolutions in that instance. It's, this is not applicable to a resolution, for example, for Greenways or the resolution that was passed recently with respect to, it can be kind of confusing, the one passed with respect to the jail, or I'm sorry, the EMS levy. Certain resolutions are required by state law to trigger, to trigger ballot measures. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Peter, if, just one point that you had said to me that I just wanted to remind everyone is that as personal people out in the community, we can advocate for things, but even for something like EMS, which we asked the county to put forth on their ballot, we can't use our council time, our computers, our phone, only as a personal person to advocate for those kinds of things, so. Any questions? No? Good to go? Okay, Councilmember Murphy.
This perfectly frames what I was going to bring up. In the past, at our last meeting, I had said that I was going to bring forward a resolution supporting Initiative 1433, which is hoping to get paid and save sick leave and a higher minimum wage on the Washington State ballot. And so following this wonderful protocol, what I'd like to do is make a motion to direct staff to schedule a public hearing on June 20th and to issue the appropriate notice for consideration of a resolution in support of Initiative 1433.
Second.
Councilmember Liliquis.
Is 1433 qualified for the ballot?
They're gathering signatures right now, so signatures are still coming in. The signatures are due by the end of June.
Okay, so we, the hearing might be after qualification is known, then.
The, the final, the final signatures can come in at the end of June, so this could be just in time before the very end of the signature gathering process.
Is that, Peter, does that make any difference?
In the past, I believe that the council has passed resolutions after a measure has been certified, but I don't think there's any prohibition for that to occur. The only thing I would ask you, in addition to that, I'd ask you to clarify whether you want to not follow or follow the past practice of pro and con. It's not required by state law. The state law really envisions that full hearing for all opinions to be expressed, but I just wanted to make sure that's clear as part of the council's direction.
I personally wasn't interested in the pro and con, so I didn't include that in my.
We've done it both ways. I don't think we have to do pro and con. I mean, most of the initiatives, I don't know, I just, I think it's a little intimidating if you do that. Just let people come up and say whether they're for or against it. If that's legal, then I don't see why we would do it the other way.
Councilmember Bornnaman.
I kind of personally think the pros and cons is a much cleaner situation of having people present pros and cons and then the public testify about what they, they feel with it, you know, because we're giving that opportunity instead of just us presenting one side on it. And I know the last time, that's why I want to make sure we, we did that, was just to, so it's clear and people can present why this is good or bad since we're having to make a decision on supporting a measure, but.
I personally would support a pro and con because I think it's really important to show some neutrality and that it is an environment that we encourage all sides of the story. Councilmember Liliquis.
So as a committee, you know, Roxanne and I were in a committee that, that considered this very issue as a city initiative, and the way we ran that is we tried to equally balance, went back and forth between a speaker who was pro and con and pro and con, and if you ran out of one, you just kept going with the other, and if someone were to speak, they were added. So we created a balance that way. Is that the sort of mechanism you're talking about? And would that be, because that's, I thought, worked pretty well.
In the past, this, the, the council has set it up so that there's a hearing, and then staff goes out and identifies someone who has vocalized an opinion and is willing to present on one side, and then the same is done on the other. And that's, typically, that's been the beginning of the public hearing. It's not required by, by state law, it's just been a practice, and I can't say that we followed it 100% of the time, but that's, in my memory, that's what we've done. But in addition to that, I would encourage, in addition to that, the, the process that you've identified for how to go about making that a balanced hearing.
I just thought the back and forth was enough to create a sense of balance, or at least in that meeting, everyone came away satisfied, both sides felt heard, and I think that's what we want.
The chair can handle that easily.
Okay, any other comments? No? So we have a motion in front of us to bring forth a public hearing on June 20th to discuss Initiative 1433? Is that right? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Any other items for older new business? Councilmember Barker.
Yesterday, I went to the police vigil, and I wanted to, I wanted to, I wanted to compliment Chief Cook and I guess all the other people that were involved in setting that up. It was, it was simple, but it was very impactful and effective, and thank you to all the police officers and fire out there. It was a very somber experience, but it was important, so.
Anyone else? No? All right, with that, we are adjourned till this, oh, no, we are not, we have an executive session. Oopsie.
Nice try.
Executive sessions are closed to the public, and there will be a report out in the regular meeting tonight. There are three executive sessions, and I'm going to be back here at 3:25 to either adjourn or continue.
Just specify the items.
Oh, thank you. We have, the three items are potential property acquisition with stamps, potential property acquisition, again, stamps, and potential real estate lease with Crown. Thank you.